Okay. Good afternoon, this is the school board briefing meeting Tuesday, March 11th. It is, I can't see the clock, 2:10 PM. First up is Mr. Joe Ryder.
I don't see him.
Woody in diversity? Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mr. Morgan, board members. The policy being presented to you this afternoon, 1.18, Community Involvement Opportunities, is the school board policy addressing the rules for operation of the board advisory committees. The one amendment to that policy being presented to you today is on page three, excuse me, on page two, which has to do with the term of membership for the four advisory committees. This policy change would not apply to DAC, but rather applies to the four advisory committees to which school board members appoint representatives. And the purpose is to establish a longer term of appointment for two years. The language provides for one transition year where half of the appointees would have a one-year term and the other half would have a two-year term, so you set up a staggered system. So that's the purpose of the amendment. It's scheduled to come to you for consideration at a public hearing at the school board meeting on the first of April.
Board members, do you have any questions?
I believe that's what we had asked for several meetings ago.
Yeah, workshop, yes, sir, when that subject was discussed.
Appreciate that and look forward to it coming back to the board for a vote.
Mr. Armstrong?
I have none, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tubbs, there he is. Have you already started?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
We're working on the investment fund policy.
Can't find anything on here today.
Dr. Graham, members of the board, my name is Bill Tubbs. I'm the executive director of financial services for the district. I'm here to brief you, answer your questions on our proposed changes to policy 6.05, Investment Funds. We gave you this marked-up policy about a month ago when Mr. David Jiang, Mr. Mel Hamilton from Davidson Fixed Income Investments was here to introduce themselves to you in case you had questions about it. But this is the same document we gave you at that point in time.
Bill, excuse me, I'm having a little trouble here, and are you, is that close to you?
Maybe not. Is that better?
That's better for me.
Okay. This is the same document we gave you at that point in time. No changes have been made to it, and I can either go through it line by line and brief you on every bit of it, or I can answer questions that you may have had. The purpose of this is to ensure the diversification of our investments, to increase the internal controls over the investment of our policies, and to hopefully allow us to generate greater returns than we have in the past. I'm prepared, like I said, to go through it line by line if you like, or just answer your questions, so I await your pleasure.
Yeah. Mrs. Dozier?
And I think we've already had this conversation after this was presented, but I just wanted to say, after we actually made the decision to go down this road, we had actually, there was some discussion about the board policy and the fact that in order to have the flexibility to do the investments the way that we wanted, we would have to make policy changes. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. The approved vehicles for investment on the old policy were fairly limiting, but then it finally said, at last it said, "In other investments." What we've given to you now are Davidson Fixed Income's suggestions for what would be appropriate, what would be an appropriate maximum or minimum in any such area. We're not required to invest in any of the ones that are presented to you, but the amounts that we can invest are limited by this policy. The board did, in the previous policy, it did mention that we should have diversification of those funds. To be honest, Mr. Jiang told us that since the 2007 SBA problem, the current money managers that we are using do have good diversification within their fund. So even though we've had all of our funds with Florida Prime, we still had diversification inside in Florida Prime, but we only had that one vehicle. This will limit how much we can put in any one investment in our local group, or investment firm, or any type of investment, so that we will force ourselves to have more diversification.
And that's a safeguard for our investments, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate the fact that your department and everybody that's involved in this is looking out for the district and what is the most financially sound thing for us to do, and the people that we are using. So I can't wait to hear the first report after we've started doing some of this, so thank you very much.
You just hit on one thing. This new policy will require us to make quarterly reports to you, including the results of that quarter, so that, I don't believe you've been getting that in the past.
And that's a good thing, that we're going to have those little reports, so thank you.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aman.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Moving right along. Susan Millay.
Next thing, what is that? Okay. Investments. (sighs)
Good afternoon.
I'm here today.
There, how about that?
That's good. Okay. I'm here to brief you today on the strategic planning RFP that has been released and is intended to come before you for a vote on April 1st.
We have no backup material in our briefing?
It should be in the, it is in the presentation folder.
Okay. I'm looking, because I've looked everywhere and I couldn't find it. Presentation folder, okay.
There are two in there.
Okay.
There they are.
What would it be listed as? View board agendas?
Overview, yes, under boardroom presentations?
Yes.
It's agendas.
That just takes you back to agendas.
Yeah.
The briefing meeting.
That's not, that's not giving us what we need.
Boardroom, briefing meeting, and then the first one is overview of strategic planning? Boardroom.
Okay.
Briefing meeting. Okay. Overview of strategic planning, got it.
I have boardroom. Is that where we're supposed to go to?
Yeah, and then go down to briefing.
Boardroom, okay. All right, okay.
That one, overview.
This one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You'll need the other one for the other.
Okay. Thank you.
Ready? All set? Yes? Shall I proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Okay. The Strategic Planning Consulting Services RFP was released in March with the goal, again, of assisting us in developing a strategic planning, plan prior to July 1st. The goals of the RFP are to obtain professional consulting services to create that new strategic plan aligned with the superintendent's goals and the board's goals. The scope of the RFP includes five tasks, conducting a kickoff and planning meeting, at which time we plan to share the accreditation team recommendations that were received last week. We will gather stakeholder input from the community, including reaching out to hard-to-reach populations and gathering their input, and then prepare and deliver a three-year plan that will be a continually-rolling three-year plan. It continually looks out three years, each of the years that the services are provided. The goal stated in the RFP also was to leverage the existing plan and to look at the critical characteristics of the district that have been documented, and a significant amount of information was provided to the vendors to learn about the district's goals, characteristics, and other pertinent information. In addition to providing an update to the plan by July 1st, the RFP requested implementation support from the consultants for the successive years. And as required in consulting services contracts, often there's an unknown, and so we put in the additional support as required clause. What we find when we issue RFPs is that we know some of what we want, and when we meet with our vendors, they can advise us on particular tasks that may benefit us. And therefore, there's a clause in the RFP that should there be additional tasks that the district and the board desire, and the vendor is able to provide, they can provide a written scope of work and cost estimate, and we can negotiate that, and it can be included within the scope of the RFP. The evaluators of the RFP represent all of our school tiers, the central office, importantly, Amity and team, because they're going to be the outreach and face with our community, and the superintendent is also participating as an evaluator. Our timeline was we released the RFP in February. We have received proposals. The evaluation of those proposals is in process, and we intend to bring in award before the board, I mean, a recommendation for award before the board on April 1st. This aggressive timeline is so that we can gather input and prepare and deliver the new plan approximately July 1st, so that as we go into our budget planning and look at our superintendent's goals, that these three items are critically aligned, our strategic plan, the superintendent's goals, and our budget. And then going forward after July, we would obtain implementation support at the level desired by the district and the board, and agreed to by the vendor.
Thank you. Board members, questions? Mrs. Dozier?
Well, Dr. Graham and I had a conversation around this issue, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring this up, but I know that we had a discussion around that there were only two vendors that responded, and I heard you say that, you know, you're in the process of deciding, and yet you said that there are going to be two other people contacted.
We're going to review the two we have. What, the question I've asked is, there were a couple of companies, and I'll just, one, one, yeah, Sterling was one of them, because they do this, and that would align great with what we're trying to do.
And Sterling worked with us before on this?
Yes. Well, actually, well, maybe after I left, the group I worked with was Cambridge when we did it many, in 2005. So I'm just curious if, how far the outreach went for the RFP, and Dr. Carlin's looking into that for me, and I know Susan reached out to many entities and through, I shouldn't just say Susan, but procurement did what they do to get RFPs out. What we're trying to find out is, is the slight response a result of the aggressive timeline, and, or is it that people just aren't in the business of doing it anymore? We don't know. And so we feel, to complete the RFP process, we need to review those that did submit, and it may be that one of them is wonderful, the monetary difference between those two is, yes, it is significant. So the question will come, then, we may come back on April 1st or before and say, okay, we probably need to put this out again if one of these companies isn't satisfactory, and if we have to do that, then I'm going to have to come to you and say, it will be impossible to have a real strategic plan by April 1st. And if you all are amenable to that, then we continue our search until we find the right organization to help us with this task. Mrs. Dozier?
And I'm going to speak a minute about strategic planning. You know, strategic planning is something that, it's not something that you do every year, it's something that you review every year. You put a strategic plan in place, and then, I'm going to, I always use the example of a roadmap. It's like a roadmap. When you have new subdivisions put in on a map in the county, you put that new subdivision in, and you put all the streets in. You don't simply eliminate the map and start all over and start renaming the streets, but instead, you add the new subdivision to the old map that you had. And let's say that there's one subdivision that they closed down, and they closed all the roads, and now it's a great big field, they go to that subdivision, and they take out all those roads, and then they would show it as a great big field. I'm trying to do this as simple as I possibly can, and I know that people talk about strategic planning, and they think that every time there's a board change, every time there's a superintendent change, that you're supposed to write a new strategic plan. Folks, that is incorrect. That is absolutely not the way it's done. But instead, you put together a document that is sustainable, one that is usable, one that is, in our case, student-focused, academically-focused, and you continue to look at it year after year. And folks, we have a policy in place, and the policy says, I believe that we're supposed to review it, I think, either twice or three times. Mr. Martin, can you help me on that? Either two or three times a year, I'm not sure.
The policy is 1.04, it says in April of each year, the board shall review and approve.
So once a year, at one time, I think we, didn't we have it more than once at one time?
They have.
Okay. And this has kind of gone by the wayside, you know, no fault of yours, but this is something that just absolutely has not happened. And I, I know that the strategic plan that was put in place, and I, you know, I don't own it, but it was a document that it took, I would say, more than several thousand man-hours to put together. And when I say several thousand, because I'm trying to remember how many subcommittees, were there seven, 11? It was either seven or 11.
It was in 2005, there were, if that's the one you're talking about.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's the one I facilitated. There were, I think there were seven subgroups. It took about nine months, and...
And you had, you also, in every one of those subgroups, you had a committee, and on each committee, there were like 25 people from the community.
We had 250 people from the community involved.
Okay, and then, everybody had an avenue, a phone number to call, that they could, that they could deliver anything that they saw fit, that they thought that needed to be added, deleted, or that we weren't on the right track, or whatever. And as a result of that, you know, the document basically got the fine stamp of approval, and it, and basically, they said, you know, the Sterling people and the examiners said, you know, now what you need to do is just make sure that you use this as your roadmap to get where you want to go.
And the goal was that every year, we'd be adding the third year again.
Okay, right, and that hasn't happened. And I hear that we're throwing the baby in the bathwater out, that we're starting all over.
In the RFP, we ask that what is current is included, correct, Susan?
That's correct. We ask that the foundation be, the existing RFP, that we, I'm sorry, the foundation be the existing strategic plan as part of the RFP, the existing strategic plan was included, and the text in the RFP said, "The aggressive timeline is due to the assumption that you will take the existing RFP, and you will update it to reflect the next couple of years going forward," but we have already captured the district's characteristics, vision, goals, and we would need an annual tweaking.
Okay. Then that gives me comfort level, all right? Now we go back to, I don't know which slide it is, it's the RFP Evaluation Team. All right, now this is the team itself, and I, we haven't gotten the RFP itself, so I don't know how far it drills down into how much involvement there would be as far as the updating and the, any changes that are made in the updating process. In that RFP, because we don't have a copy of it, and we...
I did send that to everybody last week, or to, I sent the RFP to the board.
And I sent it out with my memo.
Yeah. So that, but that's been, it's been...
All right, somehow I didn't open the attachment, then, shame on me, I'm not real, I'm not, more strategically in mind than I am technologically, you know, technologically inclined to do things. I'm still, I'm still wrestling with not working with paper, folks.
You're doing very well.
I'm trying.
But what is the, what is the question about the RFP?
Well, in the RFP, because, does it state that, like, something about all stakeholders and how we will get those stakeholders involved?
Is there not a statement in there, if, I'm doing this by memory, who will be involved in the groups that...
Absolutely. I can pull the RFP up now, and we can take a look at that section if you like.
Why don't you read that specific piece? That'd be great.
Or pull it up, whichever you prefer.
Okay, so task two, task one is the kickoff meeting, and to brief and make sure that we're all on the same page, to share our accreditation team information. Task two is to gather stakeholder input. At this step, there are two phases. Step A is the consultant to engage the board, the community, employees, and students to gather input to the plan. Strategies to gather input should reflect consideration of the community and the district's demographics, and incorporate soliciting input from hard-to-reach populations. So the outreach is in there, it's a requirement to reach out to the community at all levels.
Just made me a very happy person.
Okay. And then we go on to list, working parents, speakers of other languages, retirees, minority communities, et cetera. So that was, that is a requirement to which the vendors are required to respond.
And that, as I said, that makes me very happy, thank you. And it sounds like it's very inclusive, so that's what we need to do, and I know that as soon as we get this in place, we're going to start the rotation of going back and reviewing it, like we're supposed to according to board policy.
This superintendent will do that, yes?
Yes, ma'am, I knew you would, thank you.
Other board member comments? Mr. Scott?
Are we trying to do this too fast?
My gut is yes, but there was, and I have, we talked about this since I got here, and one of the reasons it was purposely delayed was because of accreditation, and it just seemed to make sense, we knew we would get some recommendations from that, and it seemed that it would be logical to put them in the strategic plan. So we've, we've put our, I'll say, I've put us in this position by making that decision to wait, and you all allowing me to do that. If, if we, if we, the other thing is, we want to align the budget to a plan. Right now, we are aligning the budget to the goals that you all approved of mine that pretty much cover any area that's going to be in the strategic plan. Knowing, especially now with the accreditation information, knowing the things that we are going to have to work on and be able to show with the required actions that we have worked on them, we can include those as well. I think a better plan would take more time, and again, I will be curious, and Dr. Carlin is trying to find that out today, some of the reasons why some people, some groups didn't respond. I do believe the timeline may have kept some people from, from wanting to be involved. And that's not to say the groups that responded aren't able to do it in that time, but it will be, it will be like the accreditation team, it would have to be Fast and Furious and meet with a whole lot of people very quickly. Can it be done? Yes. I think if we waited longer, we would probably be happier with the end product. I, it's just, at this point, really, it's about how long you all are willing to wait for a strategic plan. And I don't think it needs to go on indefinitely, but there's value in taking time. I don't believe that the values of this district have changed significantly from when we did it in 2005, so really, the part we're focused on, which is why we were comfortable including, including what we included in the RFP, we really just need to focus on our achievement goals and our, our community involvement goals, and those things that we talk about at this table all the time. So if we, I think probably the biggest advantage to taking more time would be the involvement of more people. That's probably the biggest plus of giving it more time.
I was just trying to, if you're going from the 2005 plan as a base that you're building on, and we're making up whatever number of years since the last time it was reviewed.
There was one approved in 2011, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Which was a, some sort of continuation spin-off of the one that was started in 2000.
So we're not starting from ground zero and creating something brand-new?
No, we are not.
It is refining what is already there that is probably more fundamentally right than wrong.
Yes. Which is why it's believable that it's doable in this amount of time, but a little more time...
So we're contemporizing it?
Yes, essentially.
And looking forward another couple of years down the road?
Yes.
So my question about, what, is it too fast, probably isn't necessarily the right, it isn't too fast because there's a base from which to operate.
Which is the only reason it was even, it was even thinkable to say we could do it by July.
Okay.
Yeah. So can we do it? Yes. If we had a little longer, that might be good, too. I just, I'm, I'm trying to take care of the big question mark, do you really have a plan?
But we don't necessarily have to wait until another 12 calendar months pass to come back and revisit.
Absolutely not.
A plan that we put into play by July 1st. It can be massaged as we go along by, I suppose, any one of us who may want to raise an issue, or you yourself.
And the thinking is that even if we, we're asking them for a product on July 1, thinking we have really until September, because what we're ultimately wanting to do is to have it in place and workable, so that when we approve our final budget, it reflects what's in the budget, and the budget reflects what's in the plan, because the plan is supposed to drive the budget, not the other way around. So we do, in our minds, July 1 was, okay, we've got this foundation, let's look at it, and then let's look at the budget, because by then, we're in the process of really refining it for you all. And the budget conversations would then begin to include the strategic plan verbiage and the things that are in there. So July 1 was a target to have a product with which we could continue to revise, and I think the vendors that we're working with have an understanding of that, and that's where that, we call it the Susan Clause. There may be more, there may be something a little bit different, and in our initial meeting, we would say to them, what you give us in July may look different in September. So that's, that's where we are.
I'm concerned about one of the groups that you had popped up there, a stakeholder group. Now, I'm going to be very honest today. I am horribly disappointed in the stakeholders' interest that I saw demonstrated a year ago when we were talking about, I don't even remember what it was, but we had community meetings, and one or two people would show up. We've just gone through the student assignment process, and we've had four or five people show up. I don't know who the stakeholders are, and I don't know how you drag them into participation, but this school district belongs to everybody who lives in this county, and I believe they have to step up to the plate if we're going to put together a strategic plan that's meaningful for everybody in this community. I know there are pockets of people who are very interested, but there are bigger pockets of people who couldn't care less. And I'm being perfectly honest, based upon my personal experience here in the last few weeks. We've got to find ways to go after them and drag them into the process, because everything they have to say has meaning, and it will either make partners of them over the long haul, which is absolutely critical in my opinion, or we will continue to keep them on the outside, looking in, and much of that is their own decision to make, to stay on the outside. So when we're talking about bringing stakeholders in here, I want to make sure that we're talking about the right people, and we know how to get at them.
I can tell you that one of the companies that has responded, they went to the people, and by that I mean in living rooms, had neighborhood meetings, and had conversations outside of the schoolhouse, and outside of the church. They actually contacted key people and said, can you get a group to come to your home? And people were more responsive to that. And people were more responsive to that in this particular, I just happen to know about this company, but they, they responded to that. So, and I can tell you when we did it and we got 250 people involved and they were actively involved, it was a lot of work and they worked, we sought them out. And, and we, it took, that, that piece took probably as much time as anything just to find the right people to, um, and we do have, we have an element in this community that is very supportive. And I think if we went to them and said, we need you to find people to help us with this beside you, we want you, but we also need you to find people. And I, I think, I think the interest is elevating. I can't explain the poor turnout to student assignment except that I think people think they understand it. But I, and I think we probably, next year, we'll do it earlier. I think that might be helpful, too, if we can get out to people before open houses, even before the choice open houses. I think there's some things we can do to make that better. But I, I believe we can, I hear what you're saying, and I believe we can get people involved because this is a, a long-term exercise. It's not just something we're going to write and then move on to the next thing. This is going to drive the district for a very long time. That's the hope, anyway.
I just want us to all be in the same canoe with our paddles in the water at the same time, and, and that will make things go a lot better for everybody. And, and I'm sure we don't have all of the final answers sitting here.
Absolutely not.
It's going to take that input from them to make it happen, but getting them to be there, that's a battle.
The other thing, and I keep referring back just because I know how it worked, principals were intimately involved in the process, and so they got people there. And that was helpful as well. And when, when you, when you go to school people and say, we need people who have diverse opinions, they know, they know their community. And they were very helpful in getting us, um, people that we, I mean, I, I remember even the steering committee, which was a group of 30, some of them had, we didn't even know some of them, but they turned out to be fabulously helpful because they had differing backgrounds and different breadth of experience, and it wa, it was a positive experience. So, I'm, I'm fairly certain that the leadership will help us as well get those right people.
Well, I, I'm sure that those archives about how we went around.
I've got the notebook in my office.
2005 are available.
They're in my office.
And it would be wise to pull them out and lay down the same principles.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dozier?
I think one of the things that you said was meaningful. Um, and I think that in order to get people to participate, you have to show that you respect their opinion, that their, their opinion is valued and you're going to listen to what they have to say. And, you know, one of the things that I know we did back then, we tapped into a lot of resources that we had to form these different committees. And every board member served on one of the committees. And we went and we sat and we had regular meetings. In fact, I want to say that my committee was called, I think mine was the Community Involvement Piece. And, and I think Johnny Logan was the facilitator for that, um, committee. And I remember meeting regularly. It wasn't a one-time thing, it wasn't a two-time thing, but it was very concentrated. And these were people that were committed, these were people that, you know, you had 20 people in this room and every one of them had the district's best interest at heart, every one of them was supportive of the school district. Maybe when they came in, they maybe were not supportive, but by the time they left, they were interested, they were engaged, and they realized, hey, they care what I say. And we can't just say that we care what they say, but we have to demonstrate that we care what they say. And I think everything that you're doing, I think it's on the right track, and I think that we're going to be in good shape.
Mr. Armstrong, no comments?
Uh, well, I sent you all a memo outlining my concerns about this. First of all, and this is just a technical thing, but I think it's important, this district's policy says that strategic plans must be four or five years, and this is a three-year plan. My opinion is that a strategic plan starts at five years and goes out maybe to 10. So, that's that. I mean, I, I can't support a three-year investment in a strategic plan. The second thing that concerned me were, were the terms. And, you know, the terms refer back to a document in '04 that was rolled over to '11 with updates for current performance goals for the superintendent and the current organization chart. Um, I don't think we can proceed with a document that has been in place that long without, first of all, knowing what the accreditation team's recommendation is, and secondly, without our own data analysis of our population as it stands today. And I think the existing strategic plan needs to be evaluated against those two, um, criteria. Um, and unless that is done, I would not be prepared to advance with a strategic plan. So, I, I believe this is a not, um, no, I'm not going to say that. I just, I, I can't support this as constructed for those reasons. With respect to stakeholders, I believe it is our responsibility to identify people or entities in the community who can bring us the people that we need to help us put together a strategic plan. And this morning, in the, um, the superintendent's, um, Quality Improvement Committee, we talked about the fact that there are a number of organizations in this community, public and private, who have been through the strategic planning process, who use quality, um, um, quality models to evaluate their, um, their operations. And we should be reaching out to those people as part of our process. To me, this is a very insular, um, uh, proposal, and so, that's, that's where I am.
Well, I did see in your memo where you, um, asked that we have a workshop in the spring. Um, I think I just saw something pop up on a.
That was another memo, yes. I said, I thought that we should have data before we set goals for the superintendent and before we started on the strategic plan.
Well, I agree. I agree that we do need to, you know, have a workshop to talk about that. And, um, I would ask you, where do you see us going as far as building our budget? Um, because if we don't, if we don't get busy and try to get something done, again, we're going to be approving a budget, and we really have not looked at a strategic plan to try to drive the budget with the strategic plan. We're just going to kind of be out there going every which way. And so, I would ask you, how do you see us getting there?
Well, I see us doing a strategic plan. I just don't see us doing it this way, and I see us doing it perhaps by the fall, um, which is time to, um.
Not align it with this budget year.
That's correct. But that's, I don't see putting in a flawed plan just because we have a deadline and we want to, we want to worry about our budget. I mean, we, when this new superintendent came in, we went through the budget process very, very, very quickly, went from a budget that required reserves to a budget that had no reserve requirement in a very short period of time. So, I mean, it's not that I want to ask the staff to do this, but I also don't want to start down a road where we spend a lot of money on a plan that fundamentally does not serve us in the long term. You're looking for a short-term, um, solution and not a long-term solution, and I just, I can't support it on that basis. Yes, Mr. Armstrong?
Um, you know, I've sat here and listened to you, and on some of your talking points, I do completely agree. Um, doing a three-year term, you know, strategic plans from any research I've done are usually five, 10, and they've even gone out longer than that. I just don't see us limiting ourselves only a three-year. Um, and Dr. Graham, I, I do have to ask you a question, your humble opinion. What is a reasonable timeframe? Because I'm afraid to spend money on something like this that, again, we're pushing it, trying to meet a deadline, and this is very important to this community. Well, in your humble opinion, what is an adequate amount of time, even building off the strategic plan that we have in place now? And has anybody ever actually gone through it from your staff and seen where we need to go with this? Sorry to put you on the spot there.
That's okay. We're, we're working, right now, we're working with goals that I brought to you when I came, just so you know what we're doing right now. And you approved those goals, and they were district-based, even though they're called the superintendent's goals, they were all about moving the district forward. So, everything we're doing right now is based on those goals. And that's how we're building the budget right now, is based on those goals, those achievement goals, those community involvement goals, those building, the building capacity, all that is how we're building the budget. The strategic plan that we currently have, in my opinion, the beliefs, the values of this district are similar, if not the same. And it took hours of conversation with people from all over this community to put those in place. So, to re, obviously, we're going to revisit it, but I'm, I'm not thinking we're going to have to redo it completely. The goals themselves, they need to be updated based on current data, first, based on current demographic, based on current law, and also based on the accreditation required actions that, that covered, um, the two, that, the two that cover, um, our curriculum issues, our professional development issues, our assessment issues, those things. They'll all need to be included in the strategic plan. I, I said from the beginning, this is an aggressive timeline. Can it be done? Yes. I would tell you that because the plan is to have it rolling, it will, on the face of it, it's a three-year plan, but it will always, it will always be moving. So, and that's what real strategic planning is, it's fluid. And so, I'm going to respectfully disagree that we need to have five years to have a valid plan. And, and I understand the aggressive timeline may appear to, I, that, again, was to accommodate a board that has said we can do nothing without a strategic plan, so I'm trying to get us there. I, I, I would have to also respectfully disagree that it's a flawed process if we use people who, this is what they do, and they will guide us. If, if we want to do it ourselves and add a person to our staff who does nothing but the strategic plan, then we can do that, and it would take nine months to a year. And it would be good, and it would be workable, and it would be manageable, but it, it would take longer. And, and I talked to each of you individually about why I was going for a firm rather than us doing it because it will take longer. But we, we also have, have that option. So, I'm very comfortable that, you know, it takes three years to see a trend. And if you go out much further than three years, then you're going to perhaps that fourth and fifth year have to make adjustments anyway because you've seen a trend that's going to require you to make changes. And that's, you know, in the training I went to do strategic planning, it was very clear that three years was the place to be. Again, if, to have something workable by July with the understanding that by September it would be more firm in place and aligned with the budget, i- it's doable. It, on the face of it, is it challenging? Absolutely. And this firm's going to have to work really, really hard to get it done. But the reason we're going to affirm to do that is because we absolutely have no one, we have the expertise in this district, we don't have the extra time of, everybody here is working as hard as they can, and they're, they're loaded with other things to move the district forward. So, this was why we were going to the outside to make this happen. I don't know if all that answered your question, but I, I, it's, it's an aggressive timeline, there's no doubt about that.
I just, I, again, I just worry about the aggressive timeline, and I do understand the three-year and the five-year and, um, but again, you know, aggressive plan or not, I want to make sure we do this and we look at it very thoroughly. Um, I understand we have a baseline to work off of, but we need to look to that baseline and make sure, you know, there's a lot of students that's counted on us to make sure that this is done correctly.
And if it were to become clear very quickly that to finish it by July would indeed create a mess or wouldn't be a plan worth having, I can assure you, I would come back to you and say, we need to revisit the timeline. And I'm saying that upfront because it is aggressive. We put, we, we did what the ideal was for the RFP, just to see if anybody would even attempt to do it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dozier?
Um, we did work with Sterling People and the Baldridge Group and with the plan that is in place that I understand that, that we are working from. If we had done what we were supposed to do over the years and looked at the plan every year, which we were diligently looking at the plan when it was put in place in 2005, and we were adhering to, um, we were adhering to the policy. But because we didn't look at it like we were supposed to for a few years, that may be where the, the angst is, if you will. I would invite you to, all of you, to look at the plan, look at the background on the plan and how it was developed, and, um, see if it's not a document, you know, it, it, and I, I hear us being hung up on three years. And I know that, I know Dr. Graham has her Six Sigma, you know, and that's not a karate chop or anything like that. That is a level of strategic, that's a level of training for strategic planning. A lot of, there's very few people that have that training. In fact, I think she was kind of pushed into getting that, she was encouraged to get that training. Um, I'll put it like that. Um, so, she knows what she's talking about when she's talking about the strategic plan because she is, you know, she, she is a person who, who has the certified backing and understanding to prove that she has that knowledge. Um, and again, I think that, that we need to look at the plan, we need to look at what these people say, and even though, let's don't get hung up on the three years because really it is a moving target, and we're going to have, after three years, after the first year, you're going to look at it and add another year. So, it's always going to be an evolving plan. It's not going to be something that's just, okay, three years, and then we're going to leave it alone, and then after three years, we'll start again.
And, and that will be the board that does that every April with us.
Right. And it should be a plan that, you know, things that are sustainable, if, if all of us left today, a good plan would be able to be sustainable with the next group that sat in these chairs. Um, we, you know, we have a lot of processes in place, and I know that a lot of you have probably read and looked at some of the processes that we have in place. Those processes didn't just fall out of the sky. Those processes were a part of the quality initiative, the Sterling training that, that members here in the district had, and, you know, something as simple as, um, as putting on a reception, there's a process for that, you know, in food service. Something as simple as putting together an agenda, there's a process for that. And again, that is part of your strategic planning as well. So, um, and I'm going to push now. I'm not going to say anymore.
Anyone else? Okay.
Well, I need some direction. Do you want us to continue down this path and?
I'd say continue down the path. You've got basically 90 days, don't you, to, to get to where we want to get by July the 1st?
If we start with April 1st.
And I will tell you that asking people, quality people with quality information who can input, input to this process from the outside would much rather look at spending 90 days intensively than nine months sporadically doing it. I think that the energy that would come from it would be profound. So, I'm encouraging you to go ahead with it. That's me. I'll tell you, I spend my life working with people on business plans, developing business plans, and when, as soon as the ink is dry, the plan changes. Something in the environment you're working in is not what it was when you put it down there, and we have to understand that's going to be the case here. There are so many things swirling around in Tallahassee right now that Mrs. Dozier can tell us about that will impact where we are, not only in six months, but in three years. years, and we don't have any idea what will happen in five or 10 years from now. So, I think that develop it based on the fundamentals that were there, that if the people seem to say that when it was put together, it made sense, use that, build it, and go on from there makes all the difference in the world. So, that's my opinion.
Mr. Armstrong?
My opinion is quite simple. I have the trust and respect in your knowledge in this.
Thank you.
That if you find that we are moving too quick on it, you will bring it back to the board.
Absolutely.
So, I say, continue with what you're doing. I trust in your opinion right now, and I look forward to seeing where we go from here.
Thanks.
I just want to first of all apologize for being late and having missed most of the conversation. I'm just going to step out and say that I would encourage you, Dr. Graham, to go ahead. Having had an opportunity to work on the last strategic plan, which was a five-year plan and out, and to see how immediately we needed to begin to adjust and make changes based on what was coming down from Tallahassee and what was occurring in our growth pattern, I think that what Mr. Scott said about the energy in a concentrated period of time, like 90 days, as opposed to a long, drawn-out process, first of all, would be more productive. And I don't think that we really have a good reason to wait and to hold off. I think we really need to proceed.
Mrs. Dozier?
I think we need to proceed.
I'm going to reiterate that we don't get the accreditation report for 45 days out of the next 90, which means that we will be halfway into the process before we get valuable current information. And that is a great concern to me, and my other concern is that we need to have a current analytical data profile of this district before we embark on a strategic plan. And so, I'm holding out for that as well. And I guess that's it. We're done.
I want to ask one more question. There was a comment about the cost, which I hadn't heard yet. One was quite different than the other.
There's a big difference between the two, and we're going to talk about both. We can't talk much more about that, but we're going to go through a review.
If you could whisper in my ear when I leave, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Malley.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Atkins on the change memos? No? Mrs. Coots?
I'd just like to say before Mrs. Coots starts, this presentation comes from a request some time ago, after the Workforce Now that was held at Harborside, and there was some talk about soft skills in that session, and there was also in the program, actually, a list of those 21st century soft skills. And the question came up, "How are you, how are we teaching those to our children?" Because that's one of the business community's concerns. I think it was Mrs. Morgan that raised the question, and we've been working to be able to answer that. Sometimes things take a long time to get back to you, because we want to be thorough in our response, and so, this is our attempt to answer that question. How are we dealing with the workforce skills, particularly the soft skills, in our schools right now? So, Mrs. Coots, it's all yours.
That's a nice introduction. Thank you. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the overview of the Workforce Now, like Dr. Graham talked about, some of those skills that were identified as desired by those different entities participating in that work. I'm going to highlight, and I'm excited to highlight, some of the fabulous things going on in our schools, and the work of our teachers in working with those skills, and then, as well as some of our community partnerships, because we have fabulous partnerships with lots of different entities that help us to teach and reinforce these workforce skills. And then, I'm going to give you some areas that are continuous improvement, areas that we know we can continue to improve and to get better in how we meet the demands for workforce skills. So, the Workforce Now initiative, like Dr. Graham talked about, and actually, the publication that she mentioned is this publication. Many of you were there with us at the Workforce Now event on October 29th, and I think some of the things that are important to highlight about the initiative is that it's a regional initiative, and there are multiple counties that have come together and participated, as well as the partnership and the cooperation between the higher education institutions that did much of the work. And that would be FGCU and Edison State College and Hodges. There are researchers from all three of those institutions that participated in putting together the research, and as well as working with our economic development groups and employers. I can honestly say, I've never worked or lived in a community that has put that combined effort and emphasis into improving the community, and I think that's something to be applauded. So, as part of the Workforce Now, there's four different studies, different pieces that were put together. And the first was the workforce methodology, and that really was working with our top three employers, Arthrex, Chico's, and Lee Memorial. And the researchers worked with those different companies to really delve in to see what it was that they were looking for in terms of a workforce, and what skills their workforce needed. They worked and interviewed different higher education institutions, K-12, technical school, as well as the university colleges, and there was a big participation with those entities in the research. And in fact, I want to say, it was in the first few weeks that Dr. Graham was here that she met with Gary Jackson, one of the head interviewers and head researchers, and was able to provide her input also. The other piece that I think is very important is that projection out into the year 2020. Really, if we're going to move as a community, if we're going to move as a region forward, being able to forecast and work far out to that year of 2020, and being able to anticipate what those changes are, and technology, we know, changes. The job market and many of the jobs that our students today will fill have not even been created yet. So, the first report focused on the skills needed by the companies that were interviewed. The desired work with, they have a huge desire to work with our educational institutions, and some of the skills that they identified, as outlined in this report, as well as the larger report, were active listening, critical thinking, interpersonal skills, teamwork, problem-solving, reading comprehension, and basic business math. They also identified things like technology, and being able to use technology and employ technology to solve problems. They talked a lot about STEM and those different science, technology, engineering, and math pieces, as well as the ability to work in a fast-paced work environment. I found that interesting. Very different, very much a change. So, these were the identified skills. So, that brings me to where the overlap becomes, or is very apparent in regard to those workforce skills, and what we have Goal III standards. And Goal III standards are standards identified by the Department, Florida Department of Education in the area of applied technology. These are standards that cannot be taught in isolation. They are very much integrated into the work that we do in our classrooms. These are skills that are important, not just for school, but for home and community, as well as the work world. There are 11 standards, and 10 of them are really focused on student outcomes, with the 11th being focused on parental involvement. Many of these are processes and abilities that are important in, across subject areas. It's not just math standards, it's not just science, it's across all different areas. And I'm going to highlight a few of the examples that the Department of Education gives in regard to the first five standards. Information managers, interpreting news, weather, financial reports. Reading, giving directions to complete a technical task. Analyzing and troubleshooting problems with technology. It reminds me of being able to set the VCR clock. Following instructions to complete tasks as simple, you'll love this, as income taxes. I'm not sure that that's simple. Standard two talks about being effective communicators. Initiating, listening, and maintaining conversation. Creating multimedia presentation. In many cases, I would tell you, our kids are better at doing that than most adults. My daughter is the one who teaches me all the new programs, the PreZs and the different things, so I think they're probably more with it than we are. Formal letter writing, and writing, reading, and utilizing technical reports. A very different way of reading than what we are used to and what we do for pleasure. numeric problem solvers. Once again, it's analyzing, estimating, displaying and representing different things, budgets, costs, being able to estimate the costs for a project before the project even has begun. And then, explaining, developing, and communicating statistical displays using measurement, charts, graphs, formulas, with a verbal explanation. And then, one of my favorite is the creative and critical thinkers. Developing, maintaining, and analyzing accounts and budgets for different purposes, gathering, summarizing, analyzing, and displaying data, so that informed, reasonable decisions can be made. Standard five is about responsible and ethical workers. In the primary grades, this is one where they've broken down by grade level, and in the primary grades, they talk about being able to work in an area of fairness, and to be able to work in a community. Intermediate grades, so we're talking three, four, five, they talk about the importance of doing your own work, as well as working in a group with others. And middle school talks about ownership and copyright. That's very interesting in the age of digital music and digital things that students work with. I find that very interesting. And then, high school, the focus is really, on this standard is teamwork. Being able to plan, contribute, and reflect on how a team works together. So, this is the part where we get to highlight all of the fabulous things that we have going on in our schools and our classrooms. And I will tell you, this is not an exhaustive list. This is very much a minimalist, and I know, I have left people out and things out, and this is my disclaimer, that if you don't see your thing on here, doesn't mean it doesn't exist, it just means I didn't have a long enough presentation time to be able to highlight all of the fabulous things that we have going on. I'm going to highlight two things that are not in this list, but that are very interesting. A principal shared with me about formal letter writing, and she shared a story of students not knowing how to address envelopes. Now, think about that. How many times do we not, we communicate not using the regular snail mail, for lack of a better term, and that maybe we have stepped back and not been as diligent as we should be in teaching the process of formal letter writing. So, this school, after they identified this need, has taken on a letter-writing campaign. And after the winter holidays, kids were asked to write a letter to a manufacturer or a company that maybe created a Christmas gift or a holiday gift that they received that they were a little bit less than satisfied with. And the students embarked on this letter-writing campaign with fabulous response from the different companies, and the kids were very excited to get responses and letters back. But there was a whole process in teaching that formal letter writing, the formal letter-writing exercise, and teaching kids not to use text language or, you know, slang in their letter writing. So, very interesting. But I would tell you that these skills and these Goal III standards are taught daily in our classrooms, in every subject, and at every grade level. So, the other place that we teach these Goal III standards or the job skills are in our extracurricular programs. Once again, I'm going to give you another disclaimer, this is not everything that we have going in our schools. Every school is unique and has different things. But I would like to highlight two different areas, and I'm going to highlight our Support Person of the Year. We had a finalist and a runner-up for our Support Person of the Year, and two elementary, one was an elementary program that the finalist, and actually, our winner, has created, as well as a middle school program, the Young Gentlemen's Club, that was our runner-up for Support Person of the Year. And the Young Gentlemen's Club is run by the in-school suspension support person, and it's everything from how to shake hands, look somebody in the eye when you greet them, to how to dress professionally. All of the young men in the Young Gentlemen's Club were treated to a necktie and taught how to tie the necktie. And on the day that their club meets, they all wear their shirt and tie to school. These are some of those skills that are explicitly taught, but not necessarily part of our standard curriculum. The other one, our winner at Bay Shore, this young man has started a fishing club. And in order to be a part of the fishing club, there are certain behaviors and expectations and homework expectations that have to be met, and it's a mentoring program with the highlight being fishing. Now, think about, I'm not a very good fisherman, but think about the skills that you learn in fishing also. You learn to be patient. You learn to work well with others that you're fishing around, and you learn etiquette in regard to fishing. So, one of those great things. The other thing that I would tell you is our Macy's Teacher of the Year, Mr. T. He also, in some of the extracurricular programs that he works within a school, from the drumming circle, from the musical groups, these are also places that we work on those skills to be able to help our students. In the same regard, we have fabulous community partnerships, and this, again, not an exhaustive list of all the community partnerships that are out there. We know Junior Achievement does a lot in this area to work on. I think about the mathematical skills, and some of those financial budgeting, and some of those different skills around finance that clearly Junior Achievement has as a focus. I'm going to highlight Florida Gulf Coast University in that the crop and the Scholars Club are two different programs that work on many of those things that, for some of our students, can be barriers to access to higher education, and they work to break down those barriers. How to fill out your college applications, how to speak in an interview if you are applying to a school that has an interview component, many of those different things. And then, some of our fraternities and sororities have worked very hard to work with our students on mentoring programs in regard to those behaviors that we know will help enhance our children's skills in the school and in the classroom, working together. So, again, if a community group did not see them on here, it's not because we don't appreciate what they do, I just can't list them all because there are so many. Areas for continuous improvement. These are some of the themes, and if you think back to just last week when we had our accreditation exit interview, you saw some of these areas. Real-life application was one of the places, and I'll tell you, many of these things are interrelated. I would tell you, real-life application and student engagement go hand in hand. Also, some of those strategies for the classroom are student engagement pieces, our Kagan strategies, the strategies our students learn in Avid, whether it's the Wicker strategies or our Cornell note-taking. Those are strategies that will go on beyond the K-12 environment. Kids will take those out into the workplace, as well as into higher education. Writing. Writing. Writing is an area for us to improve. We know this is an area that we need to continue to work on, and we need to continue to get better at the way that we teach and our expectations for students. It's a very different process to write a technical paper, to write a research paper, than it is to write a story about your dog. And we can continue to get better in this area. And then functional reading. And functional reading is reading graphs and charts, technical manuals, some of those different pieces that are more along the nonfiction or the business and science and social sciences area. So these are areas that we know that we need to improve. We will continue to improve because that's what will give our kids the skills that they need. And then in closing, I just feel that this falls right in line with our vision, mission and vision in that we are in this together to ensure that every learner reaches her highest potential.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you.
Board members?
Great presentation. Thank you.
No other comments? Okay. Good job. Thank you very much.
I just want to share one thing. Obviously, when Christie put up the workforce skills slide with the active listening, the critical thinking, interpersonal skills, that slide. A lot of this, if you're looking for where does it fall in the curriculum, I think Christie did a good job of talking about it's within the standards. Critical thinking is what the Common Core has been all about, is increasing that level of critical thinking. But many of these are really things that teachers do every day in their work. And I can't remember which one of you said it. It might have been Mrs. Morgan, but one of you said it, or it might have been Mr. Scott. Somebody said at one point that you found it interesting that we are hearing a lot about workforce, but education is never in the conversation. And I have, that has stuck with me, and I had the opportunity just today at a board meeting I was attending, different board, to comment that, because we're working with our local university in college, because we've got to produce more teachers. But there was talk about the Workforce Now Committee and what they're doing, and workforce skills, and what the Horizon Council wants to see. And I said, I just really believe I need to say out loud, we are the number-two employer in this district, and yet we're not part of the discussion. We're part of the discussion as far as are you getting people ready, but we're not part of the discussion as far as we're part of the workforce. And it, there was a pause. So I think we need to continue to promote that we are indeed working on these skills with our students, because we are. But we also need the community to recognize we're a major part of the workforce with over 10,000 employees, and we want to continue to be part of the discussion and also part of the research. So I just, whoever it was that said that, it has stayed with me, and I just want you to know that that conversation hopefully has begun out in the community as well. Thank you, Christie.
You're welcome. Mr. Scott?
Much to my wife's displeasure. I am a boxing fan, and the greatest boxer I ever saw was Larry Holmes, and I watched him knock people out with jabs. And those of you who are not familiar with boxing, that's just kind of a little quick punch like that, but he did it so well and so frequently that it got the attention of the other guy who ended up flat on his back. And that's kind of what you're talking about, what you had the opportunity to do today, is we don't always have to shout at the top of our lungs. We just have to make a representation of the real facts to people who may be in fact interested in hearing that. So I encourage you to keep doing that, and I encourage all of us to do that when it's appropriate. Just keep tossing it out there. I did appreciate when you had real-life application in there. My belief is that the older a child is, the more important that becomes to them.
Absolutely.
We're building fundamental skills at the beginning, and we all know that if they're not there by the time they finish the third grade, the chances are they're not going to get there by the time they finish high school, if they finish high school. So that foundational part is critically important, but so is that real-life application down the line. If somebody knows how to read, they can learn anything they want to learn. If they know how to write, they can take what's in their head and get it out where somebody can see it and act upon it. So all those things are so fundamentally important that they have to be included in virtually everything we do. But we don't have to keep beating them over the head as to why we're doing it. It just becomes a natural process.
And I commend that this board, whether these five people or even before, has consistently supported academies in this district, because that's real-life application, and that's why they are popular. My favorite thing about the video we've been showing at the student assignment meeting is a child who says, "This is the reason I come to school." And it's an academy that's based on something he's genuinely interested in. So I don't think we can stress enough the reality of that real-life application, and I think it's included on our list of continuous improvement, because we must never lose sight of that. And we're going to have to continue to update those real-life applications. And we need to do it all the way through K-12, but particularly when they get to middle school and high school. We used to call it, in the old days, we used to call it the hook. We've got to have a hook to keep them there, and that real-life application. If kids see it as relevant, they're in. But until they see the relevance, you know, so kids who put a tie on and come to school dressed up, all of a sudden, they understand why it matters, because someone has explained it to them. So even that simple kind of thing. And I appreciate, Christie, that you showed it's not just curricular but also extracurricular where we're working on those soft skills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have time for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing none. Board member comments? Mrs. Fisher?
None right now. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Dodger.
Well, you and I are sharing the conference calls each week, and would you like to give the legislative update?
Well, I left my notes for this evening, so they're with my packet from this evening.
All right, so you just don't want to do it twice?
I hadn't thought to do it twice, no.
Okay, well, you're going to do the, all right, then I'll let you do it, and I won't be redundant. What I will say is you will be getting information about bills that are critical, bills that are in the legislature that maybe we want you to look at and we want you to respond to. If any of you could simply put out emails to our legislative delegation to let them know how we feel about certain issues that could affect us or have an impact on us negatively. There's one right now that is a, that would have a financial impact on us, and that is the bill that is going to require, it would require that every student in high school has a half credit of financial, a financial half-credit, like economics, they've got to have financial literacy as a half-credit. And while the bill is, the idea behind it is very good, because what we were just talking about, that students don't know how to address an envelope, a lot of students don't even know how to write a check out. And, you know, financial literacy, that would be something that they would learn, which technically, if you teach economics, that's in the economics class. However, the conversations that we have been having with her is that, you know, if this bill does in fact go through, that maybe the possibility, because there is no funding with it, would be to do like we did in years past when we had the old communism class and have like a six-weeks, nine-week course of, you know, financial literacy and, you know, put together some type of a program of studies for that. Anyway, I will periodically update y'all, give y'all reports, but right now it's early, there's not a whole lot going on. A lot of discussions are taking place. A lot of people are posturing for their bills to be passed. A lot of bills that are out there, I know people tend to get real, how do I put this? A lot of people get real upset when they see a certain bill that is put out there. Keep in mind that there are thousands of bills that are filed, and yet a lot of the bills that are filed, and I'm just going to tell you that, for instance, let's say that we wanted to have a bill filed for something in this community, and so our legislative delegation decided that they would do it. They would put that bill in place, knowing that it wasn't going to go anywhere. It was just a touchy-feel-good to say that they had actually done the bill for us. So I know that there were some people that saw a couple of bills this week, and I would tell you that don't get upset about them, because they dealt with putting in classes and putting in certain things that, I don't think they have, well, they don't even have any potential of being heard in committee. I mean, but they filed them as a special thing for a citizen in their community. So I'll let you give the update. I didn't want to steal any of your thunder on the specific bills that I know you'll be talking about, so.
Mr. Armstrong?
I have none right now.
Nothing?
I'm just going to make a couple of comments about briefings. I did speak to Dr. Graham about the fact that we're getting a lot of the topics that we raised in memo form, and I just clarified with her that board members will have the ability to speak to the drafters of the memos, as long as they alert the superintendent to the questions they're raising. But since we aren't going to be briefed and we are going to get a document, I thought we ought to have the opportunity to have conversations if there were questions. The other thing I asked the superintendent to do, and I shall probably look for support from the rest of you for this, but I would really like to see the briefing and workshop agenda between now and June, so I know what it is that the administration intends to bring to our attention and be confident that things that I feel are important are on the agenda before June. And so I'm just curious what you all think.
I made a little placard right here, Ms. Morgan. See what that says?
School board briefing.
School board briefing meeting.
What am I doing?
No, I'm just telling you that as board members, all of us have the right to have input in what we think that we need to be hearing about, and if there are specific things that, I know there's been a couple of times that I said, "Well, I'd like to hear about this," or "I'd like to hear about that." As board members, we have the right to ask the superintendent, and I know I've asked a couple of times, and all of a sudden, boom, like magic, it appears, you know. And I think all of us have the right to have that conversation with the superintendent, and that's why they're called school board briefings, because we are being briefed on things that we are going to potentially vote on in the future, things that we need to be brought up to speed on. And so I agree, you know, if we have a list of the things that are going to be out there, I'd love to see it. Great idea.
Other board members?
Yeah, and I would agree that it would be nice to have an agenda at least a couple of months out, so that we know what to expect and can do some research on our own.
I can tell, and I think I said this yesterday, Ms. Morgan, but we, and I talked to the assistant superintendent yesterday afternoon about this, we have mapped out for ourselves, because we know, and it's as you and I talked to us, there are some things, you know we're going to bring the student progression plan, the code of conduct. So we can map out for you what we have so far, and then if you see something that you think is missing, or when are we getting, just let us know, and then I work with the chair to figure out when to put it on the agenda. And anything that we believe is going to, any action item that we believe is going to require some specific briefing, that'll always be on the week before. So those, I don't know that we'll have all those on the list, but, or any, you just need to tell us. The briefings are yours, and we figure out what we think needs to be on them, but they certainly are yours to tell us what to put on the agenda, so. We can give you what we have so far, and I meet with Cabinet tomorrow, and we can map that out. We have a keeper of that list, and I can't remember if it's Amy or Christie, it's one of them, but we'll map that out and send it to you, so you have what we have so far. Because we do, we do plan out, mostly because Jen Schaefer gets on us if we don't. So we do have that.
And I want to thank you for bringing that up, because basically what that does is that kind of tightens things up for us, and we can see when things are going to be on the agenda. We can see when things, you know, we can see everything that's out there. Like when you said pupil progression plan, the code of conduct, all of these, there are things that come every year, and we know that they come.
Exactly.
And, you know, one of the things that, and this is paper and pencil, one of the things that I know, an old trick that we all learned, was to have like a file of January, February, you know, the entire year, and in those files, you would slip down the things that you had to do during those months, you know.
We're working to that end.
Exactly. And that is where we should get to. That's quality, you know, and at, say, and we would probably get it, because our calendar year really starts in August, we would get it in August. And then we'd say, okay, here's the, here's, no, it can't be in August. It would have to be in, no, we could get it in August, because it would just be, the date of the meeting would change. You know, you would just have the item and say that it came on this month, you know, like we would know that we're going to have the code of conduct in like April or May.
And we've done that as a cabinet, so we can share that with you all.
Yeah, so that would be great. You know, that would be one more piece of information that would.
Got it.
Very good.
Thanks, Ms. Morgan.
The other thing I wanted to bring up is I did Continuous Systemic Improvement Advisory Committee last night, and then I did the Quality Improvement Advisory Committee this morning. The one last night is for the board, the one this morning is for the superintendent. Both groups are keenly interested in the outcome of the accreditation and participating in the strategic planning. And so I just caught Dr. Graham briefly before the meeting started and said, you know, we really have to figure out for these two groups what role these entities will play in the process going forward. And I think they are looking for a specific direction from us, so I just wanted to bring that up. Any other?
No.
Who's next? Board attorney?
Yes, I do have a school on minute. I thought over the next number of meetings, I discussed procurement issues, and the specific subject today is the basic requirement for competitive solicitation. State Board of Education Rule 68-1.012 establishes the requirements for procurement processes for school districts, and it requires that competitive solicitation be used when obtaining commodities or services that exceed that bid threshold of $50,000. The rule does allow a school board to establish a lower bid threshold. It prohibits the school board from establishing a threshold of greater than $50,000. The Lee County School Board, through adoption of policy, has established that bid threshold at $25,000. The rule also prohibits districts from dividing the amount of the purchase to avoid the threshold, and again, they cannot set a higher threshold. The rule requires the district to award the, award the bid to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. Responsive meaning meets all the specifications as established in the invitation to bid, and responsible meaning that they have the proven ability to supply that service or that commodity. The rule also allows for alternate and multiple awardees. Alternate meaning that in the event that the primary vendor fails or is terminated, that the alternate can be put in place to provide that service or commodity. And multiple meaning that a second supplier can be awarded in order to have a sufficient ability to meet the quantity needed by the school district. That's all I have today.
Thank you very much, Dr. Graham. Nothing at this time? All right. Thank you, and so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.